Let's go ahead and kick it off with Pardal allegiance. Alright, so let's go ahead and have Sasa introduce the middle school presentations.
Thank you for making time for us today. The whole middle school did a cross-curricular unit. You need to do something.
Nope.
Unit this January and February, which we've never done anything like this before. And one of the kids made this, three of them made this presentation to raise awareness for you. So they're gonna take notes from here. Alright. Why don't we get in line so there's not pauses between. Go on, Hannah.
Hello, and welcome to our upstake wing project, middle school cross-curricular unit presentation. Mason, Ruby, and I need this. This is our essential question and our learning objectives. The essential question was, how does clothing, food, and the waste impact Earth's systems? And the learning objectives were, number one, explain the environmental, economic, and social impact of clothing waste. Number two, design a creative way to recycle or upcycle old clothing into new products and present your product. And number three was raise awareness about clothing waste in the circle, encouraging sustainable practices among your peers and in the community.
Okay, phase one, introducing the topic. First, we chose three circles. The first was asking students how often they buy new clothes and shoes. The second was what do you do once your clothing has holes or is too small for you? The third survey was what items we thought are the most bought from companies like Amazon and eBay.
Phase two, building background knowledge. Next, we watched a documentary by now, A Shopping Conspiracy, that talked about the ways companies pollute the earth with gases, waste, and clothes. And then we had conversations with about it after.
We had a Goodwill speaker come in, her name was Morgan Seawall. She came to our school and told us where their clothes go, when people donate them to Goodwill, and what happens to them. Phase three, incorporate projects. Next, we chose a related topic that we're interested in learning more about and started our research for our ready piece. Topics included food waste, ocean pollution, Amazon waste, e-waste, fast fashion, and more.
For our phase four, we began creating designs for our upcycling project. So as one of our peers here, he's like started like designing like his like labels and what he wants to do. And we just use like very like tools and paper to help create our design.
Creating and designing. We finally got to create our upcycling textile projects using sewing machines, ironing, and sewing by hand. Most of us did not know how to sew, and we also learned that.
Raising awareness and taking action. The third part of this project was the educational piece. We created ways to explain and what we had learned to other people. We made, they made this presentation book, Marty Fulton-Borg's memes and videos. Some of them are over on that table.
Um, the next thing we did was exhibit of all the things we did. So we included our entry projects, our upset projects, and our raising awareness projects. And it was really cool. Every, all the kids in the school came, all the teachers came, and some parents came. So it was really cool, and we all got a chair, and she organized it.
So I organized the entire presentation. So I had to make all these like little labels, and I had to figure out where each child was supposed to go due to their, how big their project was, as you can see here. So I put like, I grouped each like bigger project together, and then like I grouped the smaller projects.
You made an invitation.
And I made the invitation.
So that was her raising awareness project.
And then this was our upcycle creations. And people made sweatshirts and pillows. I made a bag for my cat to go in, out of a pillowcase and t-shirts and robe. And then we have some people.
Does your cat like it?
No.
Oh, you wanted to show them the picture?
I have a picture of my cat.
Alright, does anyone else want to show stuff you made?
I made a lady cat stuffed animal, and I'll talk more about it later.
But what did you make that out of?
A robe.
And was it hard to sew?
It was pretty hard to sew, but it was also like really fun because I got to use a sewing machine and I really liked to do that.
As Miss With Fruit, just for Miss With. I did a daughter, there's no picture or anything, and I don't have it with me. But it was out of a sweatshirt sleeve, and my dog ripped it up already. But.
Say to me now, I'm moving.
Yeah, you guys can show what I did.
So we made a dress out of an old skirt. So this is two pieces of old fabric that we found, the henfin youth, so we started using them. And one of my mom's old dressers, we cut it in half. And, and I'll tell them about this. So we had to use a special machine to like fill them up, and we had to cut it. And this is a photo of me.
Honestly, I don't know what to call this. It's either a dress or an outfit. I still don't know the name of it, but it's this skirt with made out of old curtains that I found in my attic. And then this shirt that a friend lent, lent it to me. And I made a belt to hold up this, and I had to hand sew a lot of this because both of the fabrics I used were very hard to work with. This was too thin for the sewing machines, and this was too thick for the sewing machines.
Yeah, so if you look at everything she did, that's all hand sewn. Abby, do you know how to do this? They had it before.
I know how to hand sew. I didn't know how to sew, but a lot of the stitch, a lot of the stitches near the top are hand sewn stitches. And then in the back, there's some hand sewn stitches.
Uh, I made a dinosaur.
What'd you make it out of?
Uh, I made it out of old t-shirts, and the eyes are sweatshirt bits.
You created that design yourself, right?
Technically, yeah.
And did your teacher have no faith that it was gonna work?
I mean, depends on which one.
Yeah.
So it took my walls.
Did you hand sew the eyes, or did you?
Uh, I mean, it depends on which one. This one is hand sewn, but I didn't like how that looks, so I, I used a sewing machine on this one. And then there was lots of little holes that I needed to patch up.
Had you used this one?
Yes.
Um, I made a bag out of an old t-shirt. And my t-shirt, or not t-shirt, it was a long sleeve shirt, but it was too small, so it was a mini one. And I used this from someone from materials from the fashion.
It's a very stylish. Anybody else? There's a quilt over there that Caleb Shepherd made out of hockey jerseys. Um, there's a pillow that Ozzy made.
Okay, so um, this is Dave's shirt. Ozzy has an uncle named Dave. He died. And he suddenly gave it to his grandma.
Okay. Sage. So can you talk a little bit about how I connected with every person?
Okay, so this is a multi-curricular unit. And the science part of it was writing a C R, which is a claim, evidence, and reasoning. And the question for that is what is the impacts of waste of clothing, food, and electronics on Earth's systems? And the claim is we're answered the question. The evidence was you have to include three points of evidence from your research for this project. And the reasoning is the how or why, like the evidence proves you. And it was hard because there was a lot of writing.
So. Part of it, I had to measure out the whole cap. So I first had to measure out the front and the back panels to make the matchup and all the same. And then I was just gonna originally stick them together, but that wouldn't have made a 3D object. So I had to um. Measure a whole middle strip to put in between it so that it could become 3D. And then I also, I didn't just wanna make it a normal stuffed animal cat. I made it weighted. So I put, I made this out of an old t-shirt that I found, or yeah, tank top that I found in Lost and Found. And then I put rice inside, and then I added some Velcro to the cat and put it in so that I can take this out, heat it up, and then put it back in. And.
And the math was hard?
And the math was hard because making like a rounded, like animal-like object was really hard.
Yeah, and I think the problem-solving piece of it for a lot of them is figuring out what they were gonna do and how they were gonna map it out was something that they hadn't done before, and they realized they had to shift or change in the middle of it. Some of them changed actually what they did.
The airline social studies piece of this was we did an inquiry essay into raising awareness and taking action projects. So some inquiry and project topics were what happens to e-waste? How does fashion risk impact the ocean? What happens to food and your carbon footprint? I did food waste, so my findings of that will actually be in the newspaper if you're lucky enough there. And some raising awareness projects were this school board presentation, a worldwide, not worldwide, school-wide clothing swap, and a brochure on eco-friendly brands that you haven't found yet.
A couple of them are going to be explained in your presentation.
Okay, so um, me, Isabel, and Lucas made a school-wide clothing swap, which is where every grade and every person in the grade brought one piece of clothing in school, and we all put it in a big bucket, and then.
And then organized it by size, and then they got to figure out what clothes they wanted and what they didn't want.
And this helps like reduce clothing waste by spreading out clothes, and people got clothes they actually wanted and would wear so that don't just go to waste. And then me and Lucas also did a video about what is the best material for clothes? And it's really funny, and we're gonna watch it later, and you're all gonna learn.
So Salem, I did brochures, which you have.
Um, so these brochures show a bunch of the places that you can look to shop for more clean brands that won't use as, won't use as many materials. Um, yes.
And we also included, who included price ranges? Because as we learned while researching this topic, that lots of eco-friendly companies are more expensive because they're not using the cheap, comfortable stuff. That's why when you go to like a store like Walmart or something, the clothes are more cheaper. Yeah, because they're comfortable.
Uh, my entry topic was, uh. Where is it on here? How does fashion affect the ocean? And one thing that I learned is that when you wash your clothes, I don't remember the exact number, but like, like a lot of it, like tons of it goes into the ocean just from one wash of like a t-shirt or something like that, because of the amount of microplastics in it. And a lot of things are, a lot of the clothings nowadays are made up of microplastics and like different fabrics that aren't good for the environment, like Nora said.
So I did this board that shows, tells a lot about the waste and how it like affects the planet. Uh, and like, uh. How companies take advantage of planned obsolescence, and when products break down purposely, so buy more. Uh, so that was what I did. Also took apart the phone to show the sides of the.
You just take that apart yourself, right? Alright, you guys all set?
Yes.
What we learned is that our waste affects the environment so much more than we have ever known. It affects our ecosystem and people's health. We now know that stores like Amazon create so much waste that it really affects our planet. We all want to try our hardest to make sure that our environment is safe.
And then I realized Nick, we had times, Nick also made a really funny.
Well, yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, um, so. Me and Lucas made a video, and it's really funny. Um, and there's one part where it's me, the same character, but in different clothes. So it's the same character, I'm just wearing different clothes because I said a word that I wasn't supposed to say, and then this Sasa maybe changed it.
Well, because the little kids were gonna watch it. And now I wish I could.
Well, that's just more clothes of yours that we've sold for 200.
You get 200, this many seconds your clothes last, or you get new, I get new ones.
Well, at least I don't put microplastics in the water when I get washed.
Well, we said I would use 200, 2,700 liters of water to make a t-shirt.
I don't use, those wouldn't be.
Well, people like me way more.
Not true.
Yes, true.
Well, 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 I'm, I'm biodegradable and recyclable.
Well, well, I don't police those.
What?
I don't police the groundwater around the room.
Well, I, I don't, you make up 40% of all carbon emissions in fashion.
Well, I believe we're durable.
Well, 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 well. Wait, did you hear those footsteps? No.
Hold on, I think I'm stunning. Oh, no. Oh, no, oh, no.
Well, well, well. Buddy, that's. Oh, yes. Where is your buddy gone? I'm just hanging out around this, around this area. I heard you two arguing about who's the best material in clothing. You both think it's you, huh? Well, guess what? It's me. I'm more durable than both of you. I usually have a less environmental impact than both of you. I waste less land, I waste less water, I use farce temples. I'm, I'm biodegradable and recyclable. What, what do you think is better by you than me? Explain. You're right, not it. You're not good. I'm awesome. So is me, where is mine anyway? If I could give him a couple, couple words, I'd say.
Alright, we done?
Um.
Alright.
You're not very good.
Do you have any questions for the kids? I think they were pretty thorough, but.
Did you guys find out where all the clothes goes?
Yeah.
Well, we had.
Hold on, we have Chile, Ghana, and landfills.
Ocean, yeah.
Ocean, okay.
Except what happens in Goodwill? Goodwill?
Yeah, we do a life cycle of Goodwill.
They have a great life cycle.
Yeah.
They first go through the sorting bins, and they have to see what they can sell and what they can't. Then they get pushed out on the rack with, I don't remember what color, but it was a tag. They're out there for, I think, two weeks, and if they don't get sold in those two weeks, they're put on 50% off. If they don't get sold in the week that they're 50% off, they become 75% off. If they don't sell during that week, then they go to the Goodwill bins. And if they, they're only in one hour rotations at the bins, so if you spent like eight hours there, you could get a ton of different stuff.
They wanna go on a field trip for Goodwill.
Okay.
And, yeah, it was, it was impressive. They said they had no waste.
And if they, um, if they can't, like, use them or they don't get sold in bins, they go and they turn them into cloths for cleaning companies and fishermen that need to bring their boats. So there's almost zero waste coming out.
It was a little messed up.
Yeah.
They, somebody did a video on the clothing waste.
Yeah, okay.
It was a whole video about where clothes goes.
Alright, that's interesting.
And then you did one on carbon footprint, Nick. Do you guys like this project?
Yeah. Yes.
Now, I know you guys talked a lot about Amazon, was that that obviously the number one?
It was mostly other companies. Uh, H and M and Zara are like the really bad ones.
Explain why.
Because they make a lot of clothes and like a lot of new ones.
It's like, yeah, they need.
Although a lot of them, like, they would say, like, if you bring it back, we'll recycle it, make new clothes of it, but usually it just ends up in landfills.
Has that made you think any differently?
Yes.
So purchasing.
And also say, like, if you bring it in, we'll recycle it, and we'll give you $15 off on your next purchase, which is basically making everyone think, oh, I'm saving money and I'm doing something good, when you're actually not. You're just throwing it away like you normally would.
Yeah, my essay was about how to go on university. Yeah, how to go on, it's doing very good for me.
And it was really cool to watch them. Number one, that documentary was really impactful. As you say, they was going home, talking about what they learned. And then, um, but, um, so I think that that whole, something made them think about things differently. But the whole creation, a lot of these kids have never touched a needle on bread, they've never sewn. They hadn't done anything like this. So like, I think maybe six kids had experience out of 24. So that was really cool. You'll see people on sewing machines, and they had never used them before.
Yes.
You know, a lot of the area volunteers and renter volunteers. I also love the idea of the clothing swap. Is that something that you guys would consider doing, like every year? Because I think.
It was my idea.
Was it your idea?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's an awesome idea.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that was pretty cool to see kids wearing your clothes, like, you know, like something you brought in. I mean, we have lots of hand-me-downs from people in this district, so it's not unusual. Who knows? So you think it's worth doing a cross-curricular?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And missing classes.
Anya, learning something. Mrs. Coney, did you want to add anything?
I think they all did like a really great job and were really engaged and invested in it. So we learned an awful lot.
And I do think grounding it in a science kind of question made it more, like, I think impactful for them. It was like real world, something that meant they used good. Because a lot of times, like, if you guys have to research, it's stuff that you not connect to their world.
Right, right.
First what? Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Alright, great, thank you very much.
After.
Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, so we'll open it up to public comment. But for.
Public comment?
452?
You have a? No.
Nope. Okay.
Hi.
Alright, well, um, there's no public comment then. Let's move on to the consideration of minutes for the February 4th, 2025 meeting. Okay. Alright, so let's move on to the superintendent's reports.
So I can briefly summarize the report. So the superintendent report includes information on our upcoming school board elections. All of our districts will be voting on next Tuesday, March 11th. And based upon that, those election results, we will have some newly elected school board members. So we will, we will plan to have orientation sessions for those, any new members prior to the next joint school board meeting, which is scheduled for March 31st at 6:00 PM. Just to note, the agenda includes the, uh, the joint board reorganization, which I'm sure Becky is. As well as a training session from NHSPA, so the National, or sorry, the New Hampshire School Boards Association. Um, we will have policy review and superintendent evaluation. Additionally, a legislative roundtable will be scheduled in April. I think for all of you that have attended, those are really, really been some, some interesting discussions. We'll be looking to discuss some key educational bills. Um, NHSPA is tracking over 250 bills that do have impacts on local schools. Um, so we, we are always encouraging community members to stay informed and really engage in that legislative process because many of those bills have a direct impact on our schools and our students. Um, additionally, we do have nominations for our teachers per the collective bargaining agreement. We, we have a deadline coming up on April 15th, if we were to have any non-renewals. Um, finally, or not finally, but Meredith also highlighted some student and school happenings. That includes some maple sugaring activities in Northampton, Lincoln, Ackerman, and Seabrook. Here at Barnard, we do have a One Author Initiative, and that's featuring author Barsha Bajaj on March 28th. Probably butchered the name, my apologies. We have some exhibition nights at Seabrook on March 6th. And then Winnicott is producing Shrek the musical, and that's, that opens on March 14th. And I encourage anyone interested, they'd really do some great productions over there. They also have some band and chorus concerts, March 25th. Uh, finally, the student leadership team did recently meet, and they participated in a budget allocation exercise. I think they were very, they must have, I didn't attend, but I hear it was like their, their favorite activity. And that, that was led by the New Hampshire Fair Funding Fairness Project. Um, so that really gave those students some insights into school funding challenges in the state of New Hampshire. Um, additionally, Dr. Tumi included a, a report on student services. She reported out that the special services directors did conduct a survey. Um, and that was, that was in order to gather some parent feedback on programs and services for students with disabilities. Um, so the Barnard School did see a 92.3% response rate, which is pretty exceptional. Um, they saw high satisfaction, and that, that's between 88 to 92% in three areas. That was family partnerships, staff experiences, and special services. They did have a lower agreement, 33% on opportunities for parent input and program changes. Um, those, some of those comments highlighted real appreciation for school support as well as a desire for more inclusion in extracurricular activities. An additional New Hampshire Department of Education Special Education Survey will be conducted later in the year. That's gonna be in like the April-May timeframe, and they'll, that'll be to further assess parental involvement service and services. And finally, she noted that there was, there is an SAU 21 Suicide Prevention Plan. That is required by New Hampshire law. Um, that was unanimously approved by the Joint School Board. That was back at the January 30th, um, Joint Board Meeting. Um, and just, um, just to note that that plan included or includes staff training, student education, intervention protocols, confidentiality measures, and collaboration with community partners. And I'll also note that it aligns with policy JLDBB, and will be included in the FY 26 Student School Handbook. Um, it will also be posted on the SAU 21 website. So the third report is Curriculum Instruction and Assessment by Dr. Cassely. Um, and she noted some SAU-wide professional developments in meetings that are coming up. We do have our administrator admin team scheduled in a couple of weeks on March 20th. We have an April 2nd Professional Development Day with Merko Sheridan from Novak Education. Um, he will lead a half-day session on the shift to student-led learning. Um, and that's really focused on universal design for learning, UDL, strategies, and that's to empower student agency. Additionally, in the afternoon, we'll be covering topics like AI and VR in the classroom as well as citizen science, community-based education, and financial literacy. Um as well as citizen science, community-based education, and financial literacy. So we do have ongoing discussions on integrating the S A U Portrait of a Learner Strategic Plan with our schools and school culture. Um we're looking to um bridge some of our different school differences. Um and maintain unique identities. Um we're looking to um. We're looking to bring together our grade three to five science teachers on March eleventh. Um and that's to create some um, the um national N G S S, so aligned rubrics. Um and then finally, the S A U-wide Science P L C team will be meeting. And that's in order to refine some curriculum, curriculum alignment as well as student assessments. She did also note, I didn't wanna emphasize this, but we do have our annual competition for our educator endorsements. Credentials. Unfortunately, Barnard is running a little bit behind.
We'll be there.
To, but twenty-one percent of all S A U twenty-one educators have completed. And we fully anticipate that all of our educators will finish that credentialing process we do have until the end of the year to do so, so. Um be happy to answer any questions about any of those three reports?
Thank you. All right, so now let's uh move on to the principal's report.
So um the tr- our second trimester is gonna end on March tenth. Um and parents will be able to view their report cards on March twenty-first. Uh we're starting Read Across America Month, March is Read Across America Month, and so we started it early with our. Family literacy night last week, which was huge success. We had all but maybe ten families that showed up, so it was great. Um all the students receive books that they will be reading as part of our one-author, one-books, uh one-author, one-school program. Um and they're all reading books by Varsha Bajaj, and she will be coming at the end of the month. So the whole idea is that we're all reading about um from the same author and have discussions in the school and families at home for the students. Tomorrow, we'll sort of kick everything off for the month with, uh we do a read-in every year. In the gym, we, all the kids come down with books and we, the power of readings in the gym, and we turn off all the lights, have like stars on the ceiling, and everybody gets a finger flashlight. And we all read together for about thirty minutes. The kids love it. It's a great little event. Um our professional development day is coming up, and like Matt said, some teachers will be working on science curriculum. The rest of the staff will be working on vocabulary instruction, improving vocabulary instruction, and some. Math instruction, especially for the early elementary grades. This year, we have a literacy committee that includes teachers from all grade levels and special educators. And this year and next year, the goal is to look at different curriculum programs that are aligned to the science of reading. And with the goal of adopting a program in two thousand twenty-six. So we've been working on that. We narrowed it down to four, so we're. Um tonight, we have a family pottery night, and it's the first of the series of two, so they'll make their pottery tonight. We have about seventy people coming. Um and then, on the twenty-seventh, they'll come back to paint it, and then they'll get to. Our goal is to try, we've been trying to get families more involved in what's going on, so that's why we're having all these events. Um kindergarten registration is now open. Parents can find their, register their students online, and then we'll be having an information of third. And that, we'll be doing screen. We have a lot of extracurricular activities going on right now. Um our drama club has started up. They're gonna be performing The Wizard of Oz on May eighth. We have twenty-five, I think we have more than twenty-five.
I found this on the web for this.
We have more than twenty-five now because more have signed up since I wrote this report. We also have a jump rope club that started, it's on Mondays, and as part of that, there'll be Extreme Air, who came last year, they do. They do like a jump rope workshop, and the kids love it, so it's great. So we'll be doing that um in the end of March as well. Um Haven was here this week. Uh they talked with the students about personal safety and healthy relationships. And then finally, first facilities and maintenance, we have a new facilities director, his name is Dick Goulet. He just started a couple of weeks ago. Um he comes to us from Salem State University, where he was the Assistant Vice President of Capital Planning and Facilities for twenty-four years. Uh he's doing a great job already. He's fantastic.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to the student services report.
So we did that, that's right?
There. Yeah.
So finance report, Matt?
Thank you. Um I'll keep it brief. We have, we have included both the year-to-date expenditure and revenue reports on board docs. No real change from last month. I'll note that um we are currently um. At a balance of fifty-nine thousand dollars on the expenditure side the remainder of the year. You know, that, that doesn't, you know, and that includes encumbrances for June, so we're in good shape. Um but obviously, that's something that we will monitor as, as we go. Um we, we do have, um you know, if, if any unexpected expenditures do come up. We do have a few levers to pull, whether that's unbalanced retention, that we set aside some funds or expendable trusts. Uh but I don't, I don't anticipate that we'll need um to, to withdraw from any of those sources. Um I will note, um kind of on the facility side, for our budget. Um and capital improvement plan, we um, we were planning to do on the roof project this summer. Um and fund that via the roof expendable trust. We had, um you know, the board had voted to utilize Will Hodge, who volunteered his time. Um to kind of manage that process. Um and he, he, as you recall, he did get a price quote that, that came in. Um within our expendable trust balance. So we did issue a formal RFP because we do need to go through that product process from a legal perspective. Um we included his vendor along with a number of other vendors, um and we do have a walkthrough for any interested. Contractors scheduled for this Monday, um so hopefully, and then bids will be due a couple of weeks after. So hopefully, we'll have um a, a bid that will recommend to award. Um to, to bring to the school board at the next school. Uh and then we will plan to, to place, do the project in the summer, so.
Thank you. All right, let's move on to continuing business. Is there any?
None.
None, okay. Thank you, Meredith. Uh new business. See. So we have policies, uh first read and adoption.
Yeah, so these are all relating to the new um, new Title IX regulations. Um that have been put in place, so we had to update those policies accordingly. Um so as such, we are recommending first read, um we're, we're, we're recommending that we waive the policy. B G A A, um so that we review and approve it all this evening, as opposed to have the first read and then a second read. That way, these um, these policies can go into effect immediately to align with law.
What's B G A A?
That's the policy for policies as far as to have a first and second read.
Okay.
So that way, you can, you, you can actually, you can approve it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Oh, sorry.
The.
Well, motion to waive.
Waive the B G A A policy, policy development, adoption and review. I'll second that.
Oh, all in favor?
Okay, so.
And, sorry, did you, did you say and approve?
And approve.
So it's, it's motion to waive N H S B A policy, B G A, and approve the adoption.
The adoption of the.
Policies presented.
Okay.
Is that accurate?
Yeah.
That's what I have on my app, yeah.
So basically, it's to just be able to read them and put them on a first read.
Yeah, our, our policy calls for, for us to bring forward a policy for first read, and then at the next school board meeting.
You look at them and then prove it, so.
So now we're just, we're streamlining these ones, so it's first read and adoption in one meeting instead of three meetings.
Because by law.
Because by law, we have to follow.
We have to adopt it anyway.
Right.
Okay.
We're not gonna break the law, but we'd like our policy to align with the law.
Right, right, I understand what you mean. So we have to go through all these, like?
Uh I don't think we have to do them, right? Do we need to go through the policies?
Go through the policies and. All right. All right, um, now let's move on to personnel.
So that'll be addressed and not public.
And, yeah, so let's, let's, let me, let's, we can.
Is public comment closed? We started late.
All right, um, let's just go to our next meeting dates. We have Operations Committee meeting, Monday, March tenth. Uh Voting Day, Tuesday, March eleventh. Joint Board meeting, uh Monday, March thirty-first, and then our next board meeting is on April third. So, okay, so, let's uh.
You know, could we ask Rhonda, when she does this, to put the times for the next meeting dates? Would that be possible? On the agenda?
I. We, and she had stopped doing that because there were. And she carries over the number of different board agendas that she's carrying over. Sometimes there were errors.
Okay.
So the calendar invites that she sends out are the accurate information.
Okay.
And I'm, we're happy to go over any of those times. Um for example, the Operations Committee meeting is at five thirty. Uh the Joint Board meeting is at six.
Four thirty.
And then four thirty. Yeah.
Okay. All right, so let's make a motion to. Leave uh the public part of the meeting at five twelve P M and enter non-public.
You're going under A, correct?
I don't think it is A. I think it is B.
C?
Uh, yeah, we're going under B.
C or B?
B.
B?
C, I think cabbage.
C.
Oh, C.
C, using hat, yep.
Okay, so.
At five twelve P M.
Five twelve P M.
And who's making the motion?
I'm, I'll make a motion.
Becky's second.
Becky's second.